Hi, good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is a committee meeting. It is Monday, August 8th, 2016, approximately 7:02 PM. I will be chairing the meeting this evening as President Pro Tem. We do have a committee of the whole and then we're going to adjust the agenda this evening and move finance and personnel up to the second spot in the agenda. Friendly reminder to those here in the audience and on council, we can go ahead and turn all devices off. That might be a distraction for the meeting. Thank you, everyone. Our first agenda item is Committee of the Whole and we have a guest speaker here this evening. We have Judge McCarthy present who is going to be speaking to us about the Veterans Banner Project. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you for allowing me to present this tonight. I'm here on behalf of the Athens Veterans Banner Project. I had to hand out of a post brochure that everybody get one. That's what we've worked up thus far. This is a project that was actually instituted or the idea was brought forth from Chris Nysley. She had been out at another community and seen these up and I think other folks have probably seen these up in other communities. I know they have them up in Lancaster and some other places. Basically, it's a project to place banners on Court Street or wherever else, the end or wherever else the city thinks might be appropriate honoring veterans. These would be banners that currently the Live Well or Live Well Project has banners throughout the city and on Court Street. These would be similar to those. They'd be about two and a half feet wide, four feet long, and they'd be on the light posts or other posts that are up and down Court Street. And what we envisioned is similar to what other communities have done, which is place a picture. Pictures are available to the individual service person on the banner and then their name ranked and branch of service. And for some folks that might have served in a conflict such as Korea or World War II and so on and so forth, that can be added as well. This is an ad hoc committee. We're not necessarily associated with any other particular group, but Chris is on the committee with me and so is Kathy Heck is on the committee as well and she's pulled together support for handling the money aspect of it, so I'm sure she can answer questions. She's here tonight as well. We're happy to answer any questions. But we've had, just floating the idea amongst community members, we've had pretty good support and outreach for this and people are willing to participate, so it seems like we've gotten a good reception for it. So I'm here tonight to answer any questions or explain any greater detail that council would like to hear and we're hoping for council's support in getting the project underway because we would obviously rely upon council's effort in placing the banners up with their city truck and the city workers to place them up. We're shooting for this year, November 11th, for Veterans Day is our target date and we have a printing deadline of the end of September in order to give the turnaround, 30 days to get them done and processed and out to back to the city so they're ready to put up for Veterans Day. We were hoping at least for that week of Veterans Day for the banners to be put up if city can, if the city thinks that that is possible and maybe even the month if you think you would. It would be proper to leave them up for the whole month. That's would be our hope. From my understanding, there are 32 slots or 32 spots on Court Street for these banners to be hung and the response has been so great. There is a Facebook page called Athens Veterans Banner Project. We've had good response and I've already had people asking for order forms. So we anticipate we'll probably get at least 32, probably, just speculation, but probably upwards of 50, maybe 75 or 100 first time around. So if the project is successful with only the 32 spots, the other thing we're hoping council might approve is that if they find this to be a worthwhile project and they accept this and we do it for Veterans Day and it's well received, we might have alternate days as well. You may want to do it for Memorial Day, for example, and maybe July 4th if you have the resources to put them up for however long you think might be appropriate. We think we'll get a big enough response that people will want to be involved with it and would be happy to do so. If we were just going to relegate it to Veterans Day or week or month and we had more than 32, we would hope to get the city's support to rotate those through so we get people who had purchased these, give them an opportunity to have their loved ones or the family members or friends to be placed up so we'd rotate them up 32 at a time until we got everybody up. It's sponsored, the folks who are, would like to have the banner up or their family member or their service person would be paying for each banner. So we project the cost at $125. We've already engaged performance signs to go ahead and do that and they've been agreeable and quoted us a price and fixed that amount for us. So the people who would actually get the banners would pay that front amount and then we would rely on the goodwill of the city in order to put those up whenever they thought appropriate. And I've handed out I proposed brochure that kind of sets forth some more detailed information on it. Kathy has been nice enough and reached out to the American Legion Post 21, their 40/8 group to be a co-sponsor of the project. They're a not-for-profit organization and they've been kind enough to lend their help in organizing this and to be part of it. And also Chris Nysley and Kathy have also reached out to the Athens Foundation and that's where the donations would also kind of flow through to be the fiscal agent, so to speak. But in talking to Kathy tonight, what we think is probably going to happen is more likely she's going to volunteer her services to organize the money aspect of it and be the fiscal agent for it to be able to keep track of all this. And then we can still, I think, do donations through the foundation for anybody who might not have a service person up but may be willing to sponsor or make donations that would pay for banners for organizations. Ohio University is also interested. They have an on-campus veterans group and Mr. St. Peter's been involved with that. They've been receptive to the idea. They're also checking with their channels to see if they want to be able to put up banners up on OU campus as well or they might sponsor the group to put a banner up on Court Street in honor of the veterans who go to school or have served and are staff or faculty that may want to participate as well. That's in a nutshell. It's open to all the branches, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, National Guard, Air National Guard. The person has to have been honorably discharged. They can be sponsored by an organization or a person. Either is acceptable. And like I said, it's been well received so far. We think the city will, we appreciate the city looking at the request and hopefully supporting it.
Chris has already talked to Paula on the Service Safety.
Oh, she, yes. Chris has been in touch with Paula and Paula has been supportive of the idea. But we'd like to get council's approval, of course, to go further from this point forward because we haven't put out any of the brochures or anything till we've come to you and see if it's an acceptable idea to you folks.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate your presentation. And I don't know if the auditor wanted to add any more information along those lines before we answer questions from council.
If I have any questions?
Yeah, do you have questions for Judge?
For me, Ms. Reisner. This has to do with finance. Has anybody worked through the, what the projected cost would be in terms of manpower and money for the city to?
That would be up to the administration. I don't know how they've handled that with other groups such as the Live Healthy Appalachia. How the city handles that, that would be a question for the Service Safety.
Yeah, as I understand it, there was no cost incurred to put up the Live Healthy Appalachia banners that went up. It's an in-kind contribution on the city's part to put something that's attractive and I would like to do the same thing moving forward with these as well.
But the healthy banner, I'm sorry, whatever you call them, they're up there for like, what, six months, nine months? They don't change, do they?
Well, they're actually, they would like to. They're starting their second set. We have not traditionally and I wouldn't expect to charge for this kind of engagement. We view it as the mayor set as a community engagement. We don't want to have to take them up and down every week, so what we proposed to them was the month of November, right after Halloween. We're done with Halloween. You can stay up through Thanksgiving and then we can turn to the next holiday season.
Well, suppose there were 100 banners instead of 32. Would we rotate them every 10 days?
No, that rotation won't happen like for November. That rotation would be later on, maybe Memorial Day.
Memorial, Labor.
We won't expect them to be up there rotating these banners, you know, every week.
No, what I was going to suggest, just, you know, thinking out of the box, is that we have other spaces within the city that the city controls that I think would be appropriate for banners also, like the community center.
We discussed that. If there was another way to display them, even, yeah, maybe Memorial Day at the cemetery and things like that. So yes, if anybody has any ideas, I'm pretty sure, as George said, we will get more than the 32 banner spaces we have on Court Street. So if that's something that could be worked out, it would be wonderful, I think.
The community center, some years back, I don't know if you remember, they had the different quilts?
Yes.
So we could maybe add that as another location. So if you get 50 at the first row or something.
Put more up each time would be really nice. They do look really nice. I don't know if anybody else has ever seen them, but it was coincidental that shortly after Chris Nysley came and told me about it, she'd already gotten with Judge McCarthy about it, I had visited Pennsylvania. All of a sudden, we're driving around and I look up and there are these veterans banners and they really do look nice. It's a very nice thing to do and I think the month of November, Memorial Day and possibly 4th of July are really nice times to have that. Just a nice project.
Mayor.
You know, it might be nice to explore possibly putting some of these hangars on Richland Avenue Bridge crossing over the Hawking River to have them a display along as you cross over the river heading to or from the roundabout. But I want to share my tremendous support for this, you know, myself being a retired veteran, I get it. And this is, I really appreciate the effort that's gone into making this happen. I also think that timing wise is interesting because in talking to Barb Kostorich, as you know, she's the one who spearheaded the banners that are up now for Live Healthy Appalachia, you know, for the kids, is that she wants to explore rolling out a second set, you know, so reaching out to the schools and getting designs and jurying them. And so timing wise, if we can make this happen for Veterans Day, they can be going, she can be going through that process if we continue to do this. And at the end of November, the veteran banners come down, these new ones go up for Live Healthy Appalachia and then I too like the idea of doing it for Memorial Day as well and so therefore it could give me that point of reprieve where some more juried Live Healthy Appalachia banners are being, so it's just kind of rotating through as we continue to explore different banners honoring the veterans.
And I don't want to negate this project in front of us in any way, but there will be a request coming forward from the Dairy Barn to quilt the town in honor of their 20th anniversary of Quilt National next year, so. But I think we can work with them with all these different entities and so.
We'd like to work with you and I think when you drive through a town that has those banners and the awareness, it's really interesting and I think drawing attention to our veterans is important as Live Healthy Appalachia is important and it'll be nice to change them. We don't expect them to be up there for an extraordinary length of time and just be a nice project for the city.
Thank you. Thank you, auditor. I want to see if there's more comments from the council members present, Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. So one of the things that you mentioned that I hope goes out into the press as well is that you said if someone has a veteran that they would like to honor but doesn't have the money, that there is going to be a way to set up and I think that's really important here because we do have people who might not be able to afford the $125.
We've actually already gotten donations from the Athens AmVets and the VFW in New Marshville.
And so you're running that through, again, you're running that through the Athens Foundation?
Well, I don't know if we're going to run it through the foundation or just do it through the city.
Okay.
We're not talking, 32 banners is $4,000.
Right.
And because it does feel like a city project, they'll be placed on city property, I think that the foundation felt like it was a city project and it's not an issue to go through my office, so.
So you're saying if someone would like to honor one of their veterans to contact the auditor's office, is that?
Well, yeah, or like you said, there's a Facebook page and I guess we'll probably put these pamphlets up on that once we get, and we'll change some of the wording on that for the donations.
Okay.
But yeah, these pamphlets will be available as soon as council gives their okay and so people can start doing that. There are some restrictions on which, you know, veterans, local veterans, who we want on there and all the other stuff. George worked really hard on this pamphlet and if you see it in color, it's really beautiful. But we have just had several meetings picking it apart and we have had a couple veterans there as part of the committee, just for the record, so.
So I would make one other point for more of an administrative policy thing, just like we've kind of done with the closing of Court Street when we do this, is if there are more groups who are going to be coming who want to put banners up, that we just kind of have something in place that, so everybody knows they're being treated in a similar manner.
We could create a policy. I mean, it wouldn't be any different in some ways than the banner that gets strung across to the intersection of Court and W.
Exactly. There's a very small just administrative fee for that and none of these, again, Live Healthy has also had their own funding. They're had their own funding. And the auditor's office has handled donations for years, decades, whether it be for, you know, specific to the community or just to the city of Athens.
I might have just put that out to the administration and maybe the finance chair, but you know, we've taken donations for graffiti removal, Uptown benches, Halloween expenses and so yes, we have a donation account line and we can track it. So that's really not a problem that hard.
Any other questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Fong.
What does, have to come out of council? What sort of ordinance? Or is this just?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
A resolution?
Resolution would be nice and that would be strong in support of the veterans project.
And it could be a one reading resolution so we can do it by all the date and such, so.
That would be really nice and I'm sure the mayor and his assistant could help with some wording on that if we need that because we do proclamations for Veterans Day, Memorial Day every year. Recognize the veterans, the local veterans.
Any other comments from council members or questions that we may have? I want to briefly say thank you for your time and effort to put forth in this. I think it's beneficial for sure in a lot of different ways and honor people who have served. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for saying so.
Thank you.
And thank you to the mayor's office for your efforts in this as well. Next on the Committee of the Whole, we have a speaker this evening from the university. We have the university planner, Shawna Bowlen, who is here to discuss the Park Place study and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As you may know, the university recently completed our comprehensive master plan with our board approving it at our March meeting of this year. And one of the recommendations out of that study was to create a student comments corridor through the Park Place area. I'm here to speak with you tonight because we're getting ready to have a conversation with our board of trustees at our August meeting about the plan to plan to understand how that might be feasible to utilize the spaces that we have along the corridor, the buildings that we have along the corridor for the highest and best use for our students in the student programs. We wanted to have this conversation with you prior to and share this with you prior to having the conversation with our board and we'd like to engage with the city council and the city through the process. We had a very collaborative engagement with the city of Athens participating in our master plan process and we'd like to continue that kind of collaboration through this Park Place planning strategy. And so I'm here to share that with you and ask and to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So having said that, the floor is open for questions here that we may be able to entertain and discuss. I know the mayor, we're fortunate in Athens that our mayor meets monthly with the university as does the city service safety director and we have a good working relationship and you alluded to the master plan, which again, I think was wildly successful with a lot of collaboration and public input and having been there, I appreciated that. I know there's potential concerns regarding Park Place and turning it over to the university or keeping it within the city, so we should entertain that discussion at this moment then. Are there questions or?
How, what sort of collaborative process do you see involving Athens City Council?
Sure. Sure. We would like to set up a working group to have members of our students, faculty, staff, city of Athens to be part of a working group to look. There's a big portion of the study that's centered around understanding the space and the buildings that we have and how do we best situate, put the best program in those facilities. So we would like to work collaboratively with the city of Athens and also review the findings as we get through the study with the city council.
And what sort of timeline do you see part of?
We're anticipating a six-month timeline, but again, we are just thinking about how to plan for such an endeavor and would like to have the conversation and feedback to share with our board and also share with our board planning process. We are anticipating, again, about six months of a process that would begin with sort of understanding issues and opportunities and planning from there.
And you're presenting something to the trustees in August concerning this and exactly what are you presenting to them? The idea for the study, is that?
Just the idea for the study. What we're simply saying is that the master plan made a recommendation to think about how we meet some of the pedestrian and vehicular safety concerns as well as accommodate some student program needs that we have. And we would simply like to expand that concept. It was a concept only in the master plan and undertake a planning study to understand how best meet some of those mission and goals that we have.
Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. Shawna, you, I don't know that everyone is aware of, especially out in TV land as well, aware of what the comprehensive plan, master plan suggested or what the concept or idea was. Can you just share that?
Sure.
And it's not about the house because the newspaper was talking about the house today, one of the newspapers, so that's not what we're talking about here.
Right. In the master plan, we talked about the notion that former Baker Center sort of was a center of our campus when it was placed where our now Schoonover Center was once upon a time. And when we moved our Baker Center to the current position on the east-west side of Park Place, really the center of gravity changed for the university in the pedestrian corridor. A lot of students are traveling east and west from our South Green and East Greens over to our West Greens through this corridor. And the strategy really shared that there are several facilities, Alden Library, 29 Park Place, the Oasis Site, Baker Center and other buildings that we have, Lindley, Cruisin' House and others along South Court Street that are, could be considered for meeting some of our student program needs. It also talked about in Live Lingle Street and thinking about ways to help mitigate some of the pedestrian vehicular issues. It shared a concept drawing, however, mentioned that this would have to be something that we studied in conjunction with the city of Athens to understand how to meet some of the issues and the vision that we were meeting.
Thank you. It should be pointed out that it is a city street that we're talking about. So there's a lot of other things that the city will have to look at besides the study that you want to do collaboratively. So that's something that we need to be all aware of from the very onset.
Yes, and we pointed that out in the master plan and I'd like to also point out that it is more than just the street that we're talking about, that we're talking about program space for students and how to best meet the needs that we have along that corridor with the facilities that we have facing that corridor.
Question? Yes, Councilmember Reisner.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't the whole plan hinge on the fact that the city would cede the streets over to OU?
It does not and so part of what we're talking about as a study with our board is studying to understand how to meet the needs. And there's certainly been different ideas and things talked about very conceptually, but I don't think that that really hinges on undertaking a study and understanding what the opportunities are along that corridor. And again, it is more than just the corridor. It's the facilities along the way. The university has a high amount of student program needs for various things that currently aren't being met in many of our facilities, the need to relocate things and centralize them for corridor for our students and we need to understand what all those programs are and make sure that our facilities have the highest and best use for the students in that area.
Right, I understand that point, but what council, at least my concern is, is what those parts that the city controls and owns and operates, that's where we come into it. You know, what the university does with the other buildings and how the students move, that's really not what we do here, okay? That's an OU issue. Our issue is the territory that the city controls and I'm very, very reluctant to cede any authority that the city has over that which we control to any other entity.
And I respect that and I want to share that all we're planning to do is undertake a study to understand what our opportunities are. And at this time, we don't have any preconceived notion about what we can or we can't do, but we would like to expand that thought further through this planning process.
You know, and conversely to what Member Reisner is saying, I do think it behooves the city to have the dialogue and to be a part of the study because we are talking about citizens of Athens and their safety potentially could be in jeopardy or the overall benefit of understanding long-term plans from the university. It behooves the city to be a part of that discussion and I think that that's what you're asking this evening is?
Correct.
For the blessing of the city to be a part of this planning and study.
Absolutely.
Other comments from council members?
I would just say, in my travels the last few weeks, we were near quite a few campuses and universities and I know that over the last five to 10 years, this is kind of something that you've seen where vehicular traffic from larger university is pushed off to the edges and I know that, you know, is being described in the master plan and that was a big, a big push. And as I always like to say, Athens is a unique little place and we only have so much real estate as well. You have real estate, we have real estate, but safety and the security of our citizens as President Pro Tem mentioned is very important and so, you know, the safety of everybody, especially when it comes to fire and emergency vehicles is obviously a really important piece and we do have, you have a unique university in terms of the planning and how to, and I know you've thought about that, but we have to be very cognizant of that, obviously, so.
Yeah.
Anything from the mayor's office as well? Any comments or?
I do want to share that our city engineer, Andy Stone, has reached out to colleagues in other cities which have large universities, in particular Cincinnati and the University of Cincinnati, to see how they address issues such as this. And it's interesting, we're more than happy to send what he has found to council if you're interested in basically taking things to a permit level, permitting entities for projects, street improvement, sidewalk improvement, whatever. sidewalk improvement, whatever. It's worth looking at, I've looked at all the documents, it's extensive. His colleague in Cincinnati is thorough, I'd say the least, so if council's interested, I can send that up to you.
Well, would that be, Mayor, would that be a part of the planning process in this committee? I mean, our, so basically tonight, we are being asked to be a part of a collaborative effort?
Yes.
And that information could be a part of that?
It can be, it can be.
I see like one member of administration being Andy, and a member from council being part of the study, or two members from council, maybe alternative sort of people, so we, you know, kind of have a, somebody who can go there if something's sick or something, so, what I think that seems like the fair sort of thing to do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Katsas.
Thank you, thank you, Protem. Okay, so my question, I guess, and because, forgive me, because I'm somewhat new here, would the university, and this is probably might be too much detail to ask, but would the university be then contracting with a company that would not be part of the university in order to help decide what that whole area looks like, or is this something that would be coming from your department?
We were planning a working group of members that, from different constituent groups, like faculty, staff, the city again, as I mentioned earlier, to work together internally to, on this, rather than hiring an outside firm.
So it would be done in-house?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you.
And if I may, Ms. Bowlen, to something that people who've lived in this town much longer than me, may have some hesitancy in concerns regarding this, because the university in the past has had moments where it's thrown its weight around, so I definitely appreciate this approach in which there's engagement and discussion and dialogue, so thank you for that, and thank you, administration, for that.
I think we've been planning a lot of great things together. The Rigidus Framework Plan was a good example of that, the master plan another, and again, we would like to engage with you on this planning process to understand what might be opportunities to enhance this vision, so we appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight.
Thank you.
And that would probably be somebody who would be appointed by Chris Nidalee, the president.
Sure. Not me tonight.
We could just do, let, you know, make Jennifer part of it, because she's not here.
Any other questions before Ms. Bowlen retires? Mayor?
Not a question, but a comment, and I have a rule that something you're in charge of, in fact, there is still a resident who lives on Park Place as well. There's a lot of challenges with Park Place in the ways we look at this, you know, everything ranging from no vehicle traffic at all, to two lanes of traffic, you know, whatever the mix, whatever comes out of this planning, you know, there's a number of things that council members need to be cognizant of as this rolls forward.
And then ultimately, I'm assuming that we'd be voting on anything before definite action were to take place, so there would still be plenty of opportunity for public input and discussion for, this is just offering our support behind the planning, this isn't a final decision. Councilmember?
Yes, the planning process has not begun, and so this is me coming to you saying that we'd like to have this dialogue with our board in August, and we would like to engage with you as well. So, prior to saying, or assuming, or thinking about any, anything that would happen specifically with Park Place, it's a study, a plan-to-plan, if you will.
Thank you. Did you have any questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bowlen.
Thank you.
Moving on, as I mentioned earlier, we are going to adjust the agenda this evening, so next on the agenda will be the Finance and Personnel Committee, which is chaired by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem, Robert Butler. Several items on the agenda. The first one, parking garage increased construction costs. If the administration would care to talk about that, that little potato.
The project that we hope is coming to a close here soon. I'd have additional construction engineering costs because the delays and the additional changes, figures and what have you, of $51,800. The auditor was able to, states were able to utilize $86,000 that was unused from, I believe in 2014, perhaps there was a placement of $86,000 at that time when we talked about elevator upgrades, we did not use, so that's able to roll into this. Bottom line is at the end of this, the actual construction end of the project, I will need increased authorization and possible appropriation. Is that pretty good in a nutshell? The good news is the coating is going down. One elevator's up and running, and the second elevator is being modeled, so, you know, my hope is by September 30th, we're closing out this project.
Okay, so the endless project actually has a-
An-
An end?
We're hoping.
You're hoping.
And as Service Safety Director mentioned, parking garage is closed, I believe will be closed through, or up until the 13th, so.
And where are people parking?
The coating cure, there's a long cure time on getting this coating down. We have to hit that window of rainless days.
There's the wood.
We'll see how it goes.
Okay.
People are just parking, our staff are allowed to park on the-
Bag.
Side streets, as we call them, not on Court Street.
The yellow bags that are down on-
I just saw that today, I listened up this morning, so I'm not sure if the police have coordinated with the actual construction workers to afford them those spaces or not, so.
Well, I'm parked there, so I'll just let you know that.
Okay.
So, anyway, so you're looking at $51,000?
It could be-
It could be more.
-an official total of $100,000. I would rather just come forward at one time to do the final closeout, so.
Yeah, I would too.
Okay.
Right, that makes sense, but I guess the question that comes to mind is that, in hindsight being 2020, do you see anything that, in all of this, that could have been foreseen, or having looked at it, say, well, you know, maybe we could have foreseen that or not, that could be used next time we have a project rolling through? I mean, $100,000 extra is kind of a, it is a shock.
Well, on a $2 million project, it may seem that way, but there's always change orders and changes. In hindsight, yes, I've learned quite a bit. One was a delay of about, over a month, closer to six weeks, as they, we were led down a path about a possible modification to the elevator cars, but that came back so cross prohibitive that, you know, we made the decision just to go with the cars that would support a gurney, you know, and do what they have to do, so that is part of it. The other is reliance on weather. Surely parking garages are coated all over the United States, but for some reason, mine only gets coated in the very last possible week that it can in August with the possibility of rain this week, so. Something I've learned as well.
I think the other thing, too, is important, is that, and we were putting together a schedule for preventive maintenance, which, don't know if that happened in the past with the renovation to the parking garage, or how well it was stuck to, and that's something that we're certainly going to stick to, to where annually, there's certain inspections that have to take place. There's also inspections that are every five years, and so, you know, that's one way in which you can extend the life of a lot of these retrofit programs, projects that are out there.
We had an $80,000 additional in this project for post-tension tendon repairs that were undiscovered. It's something you can't see until you break the concrete, and if you recall some painful times where like the ramp was closed that was due to those repairs.
There's the tension cables that are actually embedded in the concrete that had separated out, and that's actually what holds the thing up.
Yep.
Right, which you don't want to fail.
It's just one example of a change order and a delay of the project, because it was unanticipated.
Councilmember Pepe.
So, my question has to do with the stairwells and the doorways and all those, are those to the space that you want, you remember, we had talked about more visual for safety and things like that?
We, part of it is driven by fire code, and, you know, we would have liked to have them open, but we cannot.
Okay. And then the second question had to do with the plug-in for vehicles.
Well, the mayor has that one.
Well, that's next-
Well, it'll come up.
Almost next on the list, right? But is it, I know we're talking about community center, is there anything for the parking garage?
There is.
Okay, I'll wait.
Other questions from members of council, this committee or any other committee? Okay, well, let's go to the next item, ADA Lift, 05216 amend. That's our- Find it there?
You changed our order, so I'm-
Oh, really?
Yeah, we have this all strategically placed out. Well, that's what you have in front of you.
That's transportation.
Well, that's a great thing of being chair of a committee, you can do things like that.
It's still transportation.
Keep your toes.
There we go, I'm sorry.
Let's do this more often, keep confused.
Yeah, there's next one there.
Yeah, the, there was the final invoice on the lift that was put in, or the elevator, as it's called, exceeded the authorization and appropriation by $1,299.50.
Right. So, what's the fund line? Do you have the money there that we can just appropriate, or does it require new appropriation or amendment to the old?
It exceeded our, I'm sorry, our expenditure.
Right, and that's $50,000.
Went to $60,000.
Okay.
And now I need $1,299.50. Kathy, I can't, can you see that? It came out of what appears to be general, or general fund capital improvement.
It did. It's out of the mayor's budget, and they do need, it's really $1,300. They have some money in there, so they need, they need an appropriation of $1,300, or they need to move it from somewhere, but they need more money in the 500s to finish that off.
Okay. Where are you moving it from? Where would you move it from if you have it? What fund, what fund?
Supplies, maybe? I don't know, they don't have a lot of extra, but it's only 1,300, so.
Yeah.
Actually, lately, I've been recommending that departments that need money move it from some of their other funds, and then see later in the year if they need the additional appropriations. You know, honestly, I'm trying to keep our cash fund and inappropriate balances in the general fund as high as we can.
As high as you can.
We're about to go into bond rating process and all that, so it'd be better for 1,300, if it was 13,000, I'd say straight appropriation, 1,300, but that takes council action to transfer from 200s or 300s into the 500s, but it would still be in their budget.
Yeah, so this is, basically, we're talking about $60,000 that'll come from the general fund, Mayor, TC 500s for the ADA Lift, so there's money there that we can, whether it's coming from supplies, we have money in supply.
1,300, there is some money in furniture and fixtures already there that's unspent. That's why it goes from 13,000 to 1300. They've got $7,200 available, and so.
Okay. So the money's there, just a matter of moving it from one fund to another?
It's just moving, we have money, we have money there for break room renovations and whatnot, too.
Well, I agree with the, with our auditor.
Except I hear what the auditor said, though, was she's with the bond rating coming forward.
Exactly.
You like to keep this much cash in.
Yeah, we're more than halfway through the year, and if, several departments have money to have it spent in their supplies, maybe some other lines, we overestimated property taxes to be paid, things like that, and so if we can just move it and leave our unappropriated and cash fund balance a little bit higher.
Yeah, I agree, it's a good policy right now, so let's try to live within that.
Live within your budget, and, you know, we'll have time, two months, if they need more money somewhere.
Right.
Then we can appropriate that.
Makes sense?
Thank you.
Okay, electrical vehicle charging station, community center. Do we have a plan for that yet?
We do.
Hey, good, good.
Initially, what was, was going to be given to the city was a Level 3 charging station, which is a rapid charge, where you can charge an EV-
A Tesla.
Within, yeah, Nissan Leaf, but you can charge any vehicle up to 80% within an hour, which is a really quick charge. Unfortunately, Nissan got back to us and they said because of, of some budget cuts or some budget constraints that they had going on, that, that we would not, we would not be able to get one that was programmable, which is what we were hoping for, and by programmable, it means that we could sit there and someone can do a card swipe and they could be charged for the amount of time that they're charging their vehicle. What they did say, though, is that we could get a non-programmable rapid charge, one, or we could get two Level 2s, no, we could get three to four Level 2s. A Level 2 will charge your car 25% within an hour and a half period of time, so again, it's not, not as fast as the rapid charge, Level 3s, or we get, again, one non-programmable Level 3. We felt that it would be more prudent to get three to four of the Level 2 charging stations. These are wall mount charging stations, so they aren't freestanding like some of you may have seen at Ohio University, where they have the freestanding charging units. These charging units, two, will also just have one charging port, so it'll only charge one car at a time as opposed to charging two. That said, and the Level 3 charging station was the same, where it was just going to be able to charge one car if we went down that road, I feel it's prudent to get the three to four charging stations, put two of them in the parking garage, and change the parking rate that you would put, sit there, because you're charging your car, and so we can change the meter rate there. We would likely put one at the community center, and I want to retain one to either be put down at EPW or possibly put over by the police department, because we're exploring getting either EVs, adding EVs to the fleet. I would like to either get an EV for, for the code enforcement office, and I'd certainly like to get an EV to replace our Jeeps that we have for parking enforcement, if we can find a right-sized steering wheel EV, outside of having to order one direct from England. So, that said, that's where we're at with the EV charging stations.
And we don't know that there'll be an additional cost in terms of the electric hookup. It certainly won't be the $12,000 quote that we had for the original.
Right, and talking with Andy Stone, he feels that the cost is going to be, likely won't even be at the $11,000, $12,000 level, which is what that Level 3 charging station would have cost to install down there.
Can the city do the installation on our own? Do we have the expertise, or would we have to bring in an outside?
That's to be determined. They actually felt like that it would be, these are fairly simple things. We bring in outside assistance at different times if needed, you know, with local subcontract we would have.
Right, right.
So I don't know that there's actually any council action needed, other than acceptance of the property that will be coming forward.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Member Powell.
So, we did have some information from what OU has on their website, and they do charge 75 cents per hour, and you have to have that Park Mobile app, but are these metered? So when you say reduce, okay, so when you say, are you saying increase the cost to park there and charge it?
Yes, because we can't charge for the electricity usage.
There's no way the charging station itself to track how much energy someone is sucking off or-
They don't put meters, they don't put meters on there, then?
No.
Because you know, different vehicles take up different meters. I mean, they take up a different charge, the different electric vehicles.
Sure. But if we, but what we can do is, for the ones in the parking garage anyway, since there's only one cable per parking, you know, space, because the season only have one charge cable to them, is that we can change the parking meter rate at those two particular charging stations to offset the cost that we're going to incur from electric use, so someone's paying to use- someone's paying to use the charging station. Looking at OU's, an OU charges a dollar per hour for their parking garage, for Baker Center parking garage.
For Baker, yeah. Everything else is seventy-five.
How about the community center? How would we meter that? Would there be a?
You know, that...
There's no, we don't charge to park there anyway.
No, we do not.
How much, what do one of these, what's the average utility bill for one of these?
On a one-twenty, it's around two dollars a day.
Yeah, for a level two, from what we understand...
Which is at two-twenty.
It's not, it's, where you do see a large increase in electric cost is if you have that level three charging station, because again, it's charging your car, you know, up to eighty percent within an hour, so it's...
So what costs that someone would incur, the way this reads is it only charges in an hour and a half, it charges quarter of the battery of an average car, so you're saying it would be, well, if... Dollar fifty, or what are you thinking?
For the rate?
Yeah.
Probably, well, again, I'm looking at OU's, probably a dollar, you know, a dollar an hour, which, you just, I mean, you can sit there for four, for two hours, you know, in the parking garage, you know, someone, which makes the most sense as well, to put two in the parking garage, because someone can park there for, for a day. So, really, their charge, their car could be charged by the end of the day, but we would have, you know, to go down the road of ten, a dollar an hour, in that case, any energy cost that we incur is probably gonna be absorbed by the dollar an hour at that, at that particular parking space. Where we won't charge is at the, at the community center, but most people using the community center aren't gonna be there all day long either, charging a car.
Well, what if you get on the go-bus?
We, we can at least sign it, we can, we can look at that. I, I know what you're saying, somebody gets, I'm plugging it in, I'm getting on the bug bus, and I'll be back in three days.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll find a method.
I guess I'm just advocating for being a EV user, that it's not too much. I know that it costs me roughly two dollars a day to plug it in for the eight hours to charge it on a one-twenty, which is not a level two. It's just, you know, a regular household, so it takes six to eight hours to charge the vehicle, and it probably costs about that. We don't know exactly, but we think, roughly.
You have a question, auditor?
Well, I just wanted to bring up the fact, and we talked about this in our finance meeting last week, is the community center, as we've been saying for quite a while, has no extra funds. Two dollars a day there would be over seven hundred dollars in a year. Not a huge amount, but I also think if I found out it was free down there, why would I park at the parking garage and pay?
Sure, sure, exactly.
You know, and I just think that it's, there's just no good reason for us to give it away there and not at the parking garage. So I'd just like to see some way to, to figure that out. Like I said, if the community center could, could really handle anything extra in their budget, it'd be different. So I'd just like something to try to be worked out, whether it's locked up and people have to go in and get permission to use it, and then pay, something like that.
Thank you. Any other statements, questions?
It's a good idea, we can explore a way that we can at least capture it, or we can, we may only get three, and, you know, that's hilarious.
Or we could do Park Mobile at that particular site, at the community center, where you've gotta pay through Park Mobile to, to create a new zone for Park Mobile, and it's specific to that meter where you're charging your car.
I know lots of people are very excited about this, because I think that it's something that is now just, obviously, cities just provide this, and so it's just one more thing that I was kind of catching up on.
We're excited about this, too, and thank you, auditor, for, for the comment about the EVs.
Okay, moving right along. Something really exciting here, solid waste litter control truck.
He needs a new truck, well, he needs a new truck, and he's, he...
Warshing.
Well, the director of code has said that a used vehicle, a used truck is just fine for, for the new litter control officer to have. He prefers a pickup truck because of the things you're having to pick up and throw in the back and dispose of, so...
So we're seeking ten thousand dollars in appropriation.
So this is for the second officer?
Correct.
In the process of interuse now.
Do you think you can actually get a decent truck for ten thousand used?
He indicated he could, the, the truck that's being currently utilized by the existing control officer was less than eight thousand. Now, there's some other costs, you, in terms of getting the light bar on, so when they have the frequent stop, so that they're safe, and the radios installed, and I don't know, auditor, if they talked about a fund to pull from on that new truck, whether it was out of capital improvements, or...
How soon does the administration think they'll move on this?
Well, I'd like to have someone in place within thirty days, if, you know...
How about the truck?
Same thing.
Same with the truck, okay.
So we don't have a person walking around?
Right.
Litter control.
Okay. Questions from council on this? Seems fairly cut and dried. Okay. Now we're looking at appropriations.
I'm not sure what we're tracking. Okay.
I had a feeling you would.
Well, I had the CDB due somewhere, but I don't know where.
Auditor, care to speak?
I would, thank you. I think I sent emails out, but only to a couple of people about this. We need, we need money appropriated in the unclaimed funds, fund, where monies go, people don't cash their checks. Occasionally, it's a very small payroll check, sometimes it's a tax refund, sometimes a vendor. We try to track them down if, if they don't do that, and it, it's at thirty-three hundred now, because we haven't done anything with this fund in, like, five years. And what we do, there's state laws regarding unclaimed funds and what we're supposed to do with them, and we are supposed to transfer them to our general fund. And so, because, so if you split this out by five years, we just haven't done it every year, but now it's time to clean that fund out instead of having it sit there. So we need an appropriation of thirty-three hundred dollars in nine-thirty is unclaimed funds. In tourism, we have, we need an appropriation of twenty-one thousand dollars to pay to the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and the reason that happens from one year to the next is because we bring more money in, we send them a straight thirty-five percent of our transient guest tax monies, and so if we bring in more than we think, then we still have to send them their share. And so, as you know, we have a, a new hotel that opened, I believe in May of last year, so for half the year last year, this year, it's doing very well, we, we just need some additional money to meet our obligation to the ACC. The third one that I have has to do with the court computers, and I believe clerk, if court had come to us and they were gonna, we sent them to Debbie, and it's, involves in decreasing, increasing appropriation and transfer, reappropriation of funds from one fund to another to spend on their computer system that they've been upgrading this year. So, the amount's seventy-five thousand dollars, won't really be any new money, we'll just be moving it from one fund to another to be spent out of, because legally, they have two computer funds that have restrictions on how they can be spent, so we're moving from one fund to the other.
Well, the court has its own income stream for those funds.
It does.
It's separate from what the city raises.
It does.
Yes.
You're exactly right, this is no money, and it won't be any additional appropriations.
Correct.
Out of the gen, these are actually two hundred funds, two-thirty and two-thirty-one. So, yes, those are court funds with their own stream of revenue.
Right. For those who aren't familiar with that, just wanted to make sure you knew, it's not coming out of council's pocket.
That's right, that's right.
Are there items of appropriation? Does that pretty much cover everything? Great. I, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't bring, bring my notes, my, my mind's a little scattered here recently, from our finance meeting that we had last week, so I think there's some other item, it's just sort of, I, I can't bring it forward.
It may be in the other committee meetings, for example, the CDB chief funds are referencing us under transportation.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Okay. No, it's fine. We, we covered a lot on that side. Miscellaneous? Any miscellaneous at all? Not, oh gee, what is it? In that case, this committee is done its work.
Thank you, Councilmember Reisner. We are now moving on to the next item of our agenda this evening, which is the Transportation Committee, and that is chaired by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, President Protam.
Oh, sorry, you know what, I apologize.
Planning and development.
Planning and development.
Go for it.
I almost hopped.
Oh, that's fine.
Yes, my apologies, Planning and Development Committee, which is Councilmember Fall, I stand corrected.
Mine's probably shorter. So, first agenda item is property acquisition at Zero West Washington Street. It's more of a, having to acquire the piece of property because it's in, it's in tax arrears, that what I understand? Anyway, if we don't acquire this piece of property, it becomes orphan, from what I understand. Do you want to fill in?
Scott's gonna put up a picture of the property car that I emailed.
So...
Yeah, this is a piece of property, it is orphaned, it is essentially land-logged.
That's not it.
That's not it.
That's not it. It's University Estate.
That's last week.
That was last week.
It was last week. Okay. But this is on the, on the west side, it's near Smith and Washington Street. It's also, there's, there was an abandoned alley that runs through the back of this property, so once upon a time, it likely did have at least alley frontage, but, and again, talking with our city engineer, he feels that for us to be in receivership of this piece of property will at least aid with any utilities running through that area, possibly through the, the old existing alley, but...
Also, if it's an orphan piece of property, and somebody dumped something on it, and that, especially if it's rather steep right there, so...
Intrigued.
Intrigued. So I think that it makes sense for us to be responsible about it.
What's the approximate acreage or square foot?
Now, are we gonna see a picture? No.
It's tiny.
It is.
Is it bigger than a red box?
Can you guys remind us kindly of the address that we're supposed to be looking up?
Zero.
Yes, Zero West Washington Street. I'd send a postcard there, see what it ends up.
I think that it's less than an acre.
Perhaps Scott can get it up on the computer, maybe through a Google search.
This comes off the GIS.
Here's Smith.
I'm trying to, so Smith runs down the hill, correct?
Square foot is not available, acreage's not available.
It's essentially just a lawn.
Thank you. We do have a handout.
Yeah, if I'm reading this correctly, in terms of the land itself, it's, it's forty-one feet by ninety-three feet. Again, not a big parcel, Washington.
And it's not developable at all, so...
It would front on what you said, non-existing planted alley, it doesn't even exist.
So it's up from Washington Street or down?
Down from Washington Street.
Okay.
It's West Washington.
I get it, I get it.
Yes.
So people can go out and drive around and look at this.
Yeah.
Good luck.
It's, um...
Not to place too much pressure on council, other than the fact that when these forfeitures are brought forward to a municipality, they wanted a ten-day response, either you accepted or not. So the law director requested and received an extension on that until August sixteenth.
So it would be, needed to be put under a suspension of the rules, and if the city decided not to take it, who, it would go to the state, which means it would be even more orphan, because you know that the state would not do anything with it.
So what's the access to this property?
Alley, you said?
There is none. It was the abandoned alley.
And the house there? What about the house?
That's a separate parcel.
Wow.
So this alley that you see does not exist.
So our workers, let's say something needed to be cleaned up, they'd have to go through that other property owner to get to that property.
Helicopter, or?
Well, the...
Well, the alley is still the city right of way, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we would be permissible to trample through the alley, even though it's an abandoned space.
And likely from Smith.
Drone.
He wants to use this drone, so... Any other questions?
No.
Sorry, we'll bring that up. Next is the acquiring, not acquiring, but receiving the donation of Camp Protam into the city, and this is from mayor, you have all the information, Cam.
I do. We're talking about, again, Camp Protam, it's thirteen point five-six acres of land off of Longview Heights, and this has gone through all the hoops that Rotary had to address in terms of deeding this over to the city, but also needs council to approve receiving this piece of property. There were, and this has gone through the law director, it's gone through multiple people, have looked over this, Frank Lovell has looked at this as well. I do want to share with council, the Rotary, in order to make this happen, they did have some conditions, essentially deed restrictions on the property, and that would be that it shall always be named Camp Protam, the name would not change, which is not unsimilar, is similar from anything that we have done with Dowler property, it's called Dowler Park, Guandie property is Guandie Preserve, you know, things like that, it's nothing new to the city. The Rotary should be notified and consulted on any decisions regarding new development to the property. The property will be used as a park and camping space, and will not be developed for any alternative use, and the city shall fully maintain the camp, including the buildings, trails, and forest management in that area. There are, I believe, three fixed assets, there might be a fourth in terms of structures. There's the cabin that is closer to Warren Road, but not, there is no frontage on Warren Road, which is on the bottom side of that area on the west side of the park. There's also the structure that's off of Longview Heights, which is where the Girl Scouts store their cookies, and...
I wonder where the cookies are.
Do they store something?
Cookie drives.
And then there's, there's a couple other smaller utility structures on the site as well.
The, the structure, the cabin, has been refurbished within the last few years.
It has.
And they, they looked at, not just a, it was more of a restoration as opposed to just fixing, fixing it. It does have some historical overtones, so...
I should add that, that what I just read to you is the deed restrictions, those were existing deed restrictions on the property, because originally, as I understand it... Oh. The Camp Protam was likely a Boy Scout camp to begin with, and it's gone back and forth. So anyway, so we, we're gonna need some legislation to receive the property.
Okay. Questions?
I do. So...
Camp Protam was likely a Boy Scout camp to begin with, and it's gone back and forth. So anyway, so we're going to need some legislation to receive the property.
Okay, questions?
I do, so we seem to have difficulty maintaining the properties that we have. And this is a great idea to receive this property for the city, but we just had the auditor mention that Arts, Parks, and Rec are having difficulty doing what they need to do and having enough money. And it seems like every year, at the end of the year, towards the end of the year, we're giving, you know, we're appropriating more money to help them get due to the end of the year. And I, they're saying that one of the things is maintenance, that's what, you know, and I'm sure our Rotarians in this community will be looking at that and seeing whether properties maintain, whether there are still trails being maintained and all those kind of things. So I, I just kind of need to hear from administration what the plan is, because we take in, and it's great when people donate to the city, it's a great idea, it's a, it's a, it's a, another public space, but how are we going to maintain that?
I think that auditor's going to clarify the Community Center versus Recreation Fund. There is still the bond out there.
Right, yes, I agree with you on a lot of counts, it's neither budget. It is, has a lot of wiggle room. However, the new bond issue that council put out there and was passed does allow for maintenance and operating of parks and rec lands as that money comes in. That will be the same kind of situation where it's going into a debt fund, and when the money is justified and council wants to use that, it would almost have to be used to help with this new acquisition of property. If I think back to the time when I was on council, or maybe since I've been in the auditor's office, we have taken on a lot of additional parklands, a lot, a lot, bike paths. And although they aren't responsible for the upkeep, you know, we've taken money out of recreation to fund those bike paths, and so, yes, we do have this bond issued money that had several, several different items that the money could be used for, so that would be something council would have to think about and plan for, because there's still limited money, that money has just started coming in. But yeah, as far as the administration actually being able to take on additional. That being said, I've spent several nights at Camp Protam myself, so it's a pretty neat place. It would be great to have the city taking care of that.
And I'm glad you brought that up, auditor, Heck, because this ties into another park that I'd never heard this term before, because I thought all our parks were somewhat created equal, but it regarded Highland Park, and some of the neighbors are there, there was a grant received for playground equipment, but they were told they, they're a neighborhood park. And that maybe where it, on the scheme of things, maybe in terms of upkeep or, or equipment or whatever, they got the impression that they weren't as high up as maybe one of the other parks. And I, that confused me, because I thought all our parks are created equal, so.
The first one, or neighborhood park, was when it was brought to our attention, when somebody had attempted to place an orchard, after a community orchard, and it was pointed out that this, this is near and dear to the residences up here. So that's where that comes from, it's not coming from administration. But we do recognize that there are pocket parks, you know, that serve. Now, you know, I don't know if you drive from the south end very often, number two Highland Park, or, you know.
People are there from all over the city.
And people are all over West State Street, people are.
So that was my point, is that every park should be created equal, in my opinion, when it comes to equipment or it comes to maintenance or whatever. So if we're going to take on the Dowler prop, you know, or Camp Protam, excuse me, I mean, we need to treat our facilities equally, you know, and I think it's true that you do get people, for instance, the Sells Park area, who live right there, you know, they're, they're on top of things and want to see things improved and whatever, I mean, that makes sense in terms of usage. But same with Highland, same with South Side, same with wherever, the Guandie Preserve or whatever it is. And I, I'm just kind of responding back to the auditor in terms of how do we maintain and what is the plan? And that's where I get concerned as a council member. And so you did share that we will have some levy money coming in. I don't know that we have a budget yet laid out for that levy money, I, we've not discussed that at this council.
You know, it just started coming in this year, but.
Right.
So that would be up to the administration, but you're right, I have lived on the west side for almost 30 years, and I've taken my kids to Highland a lot. One other thing that's happened.
Which is in the north side, but you utilized it.
Right, well, it's pretty close, we can walk there.
Right, right, right.
But it didn't have restrooms when I first took my kids there, and things like that. So when you make those improvements, then you'll get more people going there. It used to be pretty quiet, not very used, and I think the neighborhood thing, it's surrounded by the neighborhood, by houses, it's not off of East State Street, it's not off of Richland Avenue. It is a city park that anybody can use.
Correct.
I think that we're getting into semantics to some degree. I think that in order to look at this, because all our parks aren't necessarily created equal in upkeep, because if you have more mown lawn, you have a larger upkeep, if you have bathrooms and those sort of things. It would be interesting to see what kind of budget the Rotarians were using for this. I think that most of the use right now is from the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts. And so they do pay into, when they go camping there. And I think that, from my experience with the Boy Scouts, that it was fairly underutilized by the area Boy Scouts for the past couple of years. I think that there's a difference between, doesn't, you know, we do have kind of parks and play parks and ballparks, and then we do have this other kind of nature reserves for one of a better thing. And I think that those are different, they all are created equal, but they do have different management concerns, so.
When I was a Brownie leader, we went in height to Camp Protam, we all did, so I think it serves a greater community.
Well, and I think that something that we've kind of discussed with the administration and myself is looking at, this would be an opportunity to have a local area where local kids can go on an afternoon instead of traveling, you know, where Rural Action does their stuff. And so it could be, the, the use of it could be expanded, so.
So in that line of thinking, my point is that the upkeep will need to be managed for safety of the people who are city residents or coming in from other place, or Girl Scout troops, or whatever, that there needs to be a level of maintenance that may be a bit more than maybe what it's currently had or people have, have offered. If we take it on as a city park, and I feel that we probably will, or a city preserve, or whatever you want to call it, safety and services are something that cost money. And I think that with all these new properties that we've taken on, I think there, we need to start seeing some type of budget or plan or whatever, not just we want to improve the park. We just had the safety wheelchair accessible ramp placed at Sells Park up to the, that, and I don't know if that was grant funded or that came out of the city budget, I don't recall.
It was both, it was largely grant funded.
Okay, largely grant funded, which is great. And so, but my point is, is that I think that as council members, when we're asked to take on more property or accept things, I think that we also need to hear how that's going to be maintained.
Well, I've already tasked the Director of Arts, Parks, and Recreation to give me what he projects as being the maintenance plan and costs associated with Camp Protam, because it was, it needed to do it in order to take on this 13, but it's, Camp Protam is largely primitive as well.
I, I understand that.
And so he views it as it not being a high-maintenance facility to take on that 13 acres with the trail, keeping the trails open, there's a couple bridges, two or three bridges that are down there, and he's already kind of looked at those as well in terms of what the cost would be. But he's, the city, Arts, Parks, and Recreation is already the ones who receive the funding for the Boy Scouts and for the Girl Scouts who use that, whatever fee they pay, as opposed to the Rotary doesn't do it. It goes, so he's already tracking the programming that takes place and has been for a while in Camp Protam. So again, it's really not anything new for what they're doing, it's just having to put together what is the maintenance plan for keeping this current, what's the cost behind that? So he's tracking that.
Other questions? So I think that what you're getting from council right now is we'd like to see a little, some of the information from the Arts, Parks, and Recreation tracking and such before to, you know, over the next week or so, kind of just to help.
Other than that, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think we would be silly to not move forward.
So the city, at this point, just wants, wants to keep the services the same. Do they have, do you have any plan, any other, you know, is there any, any other master plan for all of these properties together?
There is.
Okay.
And it requires connecting these parcels together, because right now Dowler and Guandie, which makes up almost 23 acres of land, are, it doesn't border with Camp Protam, so it's sitting there trying to explore ways to make connectivity through there to create. What I would like to see for the world, according to me, is have a trailhead that is not unlike what we see at Sells Park, where Sells Park ultimately goes on up into Stroud's Run, obviously, and has, you know, X number of miles of trails, well, this wouldn't be that large, but it would be a true inner-city nature hiking trail area, there's some possibilities for doing some other things. There's also a flat enough space up there to where the city could have its first ADA-accessible nature trail loop that runs through the Dowler property. But I, you know, I think the, the big picture would be to connect these together, where we have an extensive south side trail network in the city.
So would you, could you actually have carless travel then from the ridge top down to the lower south side?
Carless.
Carless, I mean, we'd be, could you basically hike from the ridge top down to where, where the Dow, is it?
Right, you potentially could.
Okay. Because there's that dead end, I can't remember what the name of that dead end street is that shoots off.
Cardo.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And that's the Guandie property.
Okay.
I think what we're also looking at is, maybe we are acquiring more property to be able to realize some of the things that have been put forward, not by only by the city, but also by individuals and groups. So maybe what we need to do in the next, you know, time is look, look at all how this interacts with other groups and such too, kind of more of a long-term planning and management sort of thing. Okay, any other questions? Okay. I don't have any miscellaneous, do you have miscellaneous? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Having completed the Planning and Development Committee, we now move on to Transportation Committee, which is chaired by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. Okay, so our first item is the Franklin Avenue project. I'm having a hard time getting into my email here, it's not very responsive tonight. So we are looking at amending the ordinance that we passed with the CDB, this is a CDBG-funded project. And so I'm looking at the new ordinance, but maybe administration could help a little as to why. I believe it has to do with the way the funds are taken, out of which, do you know?
Kathy, what we're tracking is that we need to amend ordinance 8115 to add the authorization to expend the $15,000 additional CDBG, we had authorization for $60,000. But I think the money's all there.
So you want, you want to bump it from 60 to 75, from CDBG Fund 248 TC 500 and $93,000 to Street Rehab Fund 572 TC 500.
Debbie, did you work that magic?
And $12,000 from the Wheel Tax Fund.
Yes. Okay.
And it is TC 500?
Yes. And this is 8116. Ordinance 8116.
And so that work has been let, the project has been let and it's begun, so.
Right. We started out with $230,000 and we're up to $245,000. So. I'm not, I'm assuming it's an overrun, I mean, they need more money?
No, it was to include the additional $15,000 out of the funds we get from CDBG. That's my understanding.
I'm looking at the.
This is what would cover the Fair Housing Administration. That's part of the increase.
So, and it is an increase, that's the point, and you're saying it's because of.
The expenditure has increased, but they don't need an additional appropriation.
Okay. You tracking that, auditor, maybe?
I don't really know anything about it.
So the bottom line is, next week, we need to amend the ordinance. Okay, so it's not an additional expenditure, it's about where the money's coming?
No, it is an authorized additional expenditure, just no needed appropriation, no extra money, just authorizing an additional expenditure.
Got it. Any questions? That was really clear, wasn't it? Yeah. Okay, the next issue is go-bus disposal. Next week, we'd like to bring an ordinance forward to redesignate Hocking Athens Perry Community Action Hapcap to administer Athens Public Transit and declaring an emergency. That is not the go-bus, correct? That is something different.
You have two.
There's two.
Yeah, I'm seeing that. Would you like?
This is just for the disposal of three original go-buses.
Right.
That have pretty much reached the end of their safe life.
So we want to give them to somebody else.
The mayor asked me that question, and we don't have that, but we'll have the answer on terms of disposal method.
Our policy is normally to offer it to somebody, suppose, but if they're not safe, then that would be.
We're not going to keep them.
I don't know that it's so much a safety thing, it's just, you know, for, for vehicles like this, you know, their recommended mileage on them is like 100,000 miles, you know, for a diesel coach. And at that point, you should start looking to dispose of those and then, and receive new ones to replace them.
It's like past useful life, isn't it?
I think they've already received, we've already received the new ones, right?
Yes.
So this is the disposal phase, which we've done with other vehicles before.
Right.
My, one of the things I noticed is, like, for instance, our city buses, a lot of them sit down there in that yard where all the buses are, and they just kind of sit there, which doesn't seem to be, I don't know if they can be started up to be reused in case of an emergency, when something else breaks down, but they just kind of sit around, so.
We have one, that's the, the one for council tours, infrastructure tours or what have you. And that's in our service budget, but you're talking about the actual public transit.
Down there, public transit.
That's a good, like, Michael Lockman question.
Yeah. Okay, so this is pretty ordinary kind of work here on the buses. Any questions on that? Okay, the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capitol and/or Local Transportation Improvements Project. We did both the go-bus, I believe. So we have all that.
So you do have that, you're, so the other one was the designation that they're going to run our rural intercity bus, okay.
Right, we've got all those. Okay, so the State Capitol and Local Transportation Improvements Program, would you like to share a little bit on that?
Yeah, that's the, going to be used for the East State Street project. We're looking at $40,000, or $400,000. You know, which will be offsetting the local share for that project.
That's the maximum we can apply for.
And so it's been, that this is, do we know whether we've gotten it or?
We're just applying.
We're applying.
Okay.
In talking with our city engineer, Andy Stone, he feels we're very competitive for this.
Because I know we've had problems getting some of the capital grants, not only in the city, but kind of region-wide. They sometimes, for some reason, don't like to give the poorest areas some money.
And the deadline for that is September 2nd.
It is. So we are going to have to suspend.
So if next Monday is your final full session during the month, then we would request that, so we don't miss the application deadlines.
But it's not necessarily making us spend any money if we do not get the grant. No. And this specific capital improvements program is for, to assist in financing local public infrastructure, including roads, guardrails, culverts, bridges, storm sewers, water and sanitary sewer systems. So that is, and it's run through Buckeye.
Buckeye Hills.
Buckeye Hills.
You may have remembered, as we used to call it Issue 2. It's actually a statewide initiative that was renewed, oh, maybe six years ago or eight years ago under Issue 1.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Just had a quick question. Thank you. A quick question, maybe I misheard, but was there a designated project that we would like to direct this toward?
East State Street.
Okay. Was that stated or not?
The mayor stated that, yes.
East State Street. Thank you.
Member Costas.
I'm sorry, thank you.
That's fine.
When you mean East State Street, is that the 5033 interchange? Is this?
It would be the component that's on East State Street. So it's from home down to.
Walmart.
Yeah, Lowe's. It could be incorporated and offsets the cost from, whether it be the sidewalk component or the improvements that we'll be doing on East State Street. The portion that ODOT will be funding are the ramps and the ramp modifications. We have grants, and this is to be applied towards that if we're successful in our applications.
And we're studying the traffic? Are we still studying the traffic on that, or have we, has a report been released yet on what they're finding?
I do not have a report. We did study this, and we had open houses and the, what ODOT agreed to fund were the dual lifts. So it'll be dual left, dual ramps coming down on the planes, and then dual ramps going out from Bob Evans out west. And then the components underneath in terms of keeping traffic flowing, extended dual lifts, extended to get head west out of the city as well as improve all that.
Okay.
Okay, it's dual lifts on to East State Street, and then it's dual lifts to get on to 33 is the corrective action, you know. In terms of the traffic counts and the study of that area, for those of you, some of you attended, when they were talking about the DDI intersection down there, you know, that actually had the best solution. But ODOT would not fund that project to move forward, wouldn't approve that project.
That was the state.
Because it was a mob by DDI, correct?
The state, our local folks, our local district 10 liked it.
They did like it.
When it moved up to Columbus, they didn't care for it.
So this double left was another solution to the modeling that was done. And it's an effective solution.
So what you're saying is the engineering firm is down there gathering data and then going to present back whether it be, are we modifying this intersection here and just making sure that we can fit a sidewalk in with the existing utility poles and how that'll be.
Okay.
We should have an update here within the month.
Because my understanding, some of the most dangerous intersections in the city right now, the most accidents are happening down State Street. Am I correct in that?
I think the most, if we have those models, are the, what do you call assured, not getting assured clear distance. So it's the fender benders. It's the bumpers that happen at between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock and just snarl at the traffic. I would contend from Charles Community Center to, you know, Underpass.
And I know at one point they were talking about an additional exit ramp going north up 33. Is that no longer?
No, that was, you're talking right there by Children's Services.
Correct. Okay. Good.
I think that, and I know I'll speak for Jennifer Cochran, member Cochran who's not here this evening, but in our study and what we do as a city down there is many traffic calming type of activities that we have the strobe lights right now that are trying to slow traffic. But what we can put, I know that Director Stone has talked about other things to try to calm the traffic and the pedestrian access there, to try to remind people that pedestrians, because we do know that people run a couple of those stoplights on a regular basis. They just run right through them. And it's very, I think you're, that's what you're referring to, Member Costas, is the safety issues with our community center now with a newer pool eventually and potential farmer's market and all those things. This is all being discussed in the planning.
There's a lot being considered in this. And as you remember from the street tour, that there's a lot of things that can be done with street widths as well. There could be bike lanes that are put on East State Street along with the new sidewalks. We're getting the sidewalks in as well, extending down on the south side of East State Street. So it's, it's, there's a high level of planning that's going into the East State Street project.
And that thought pattern then would be potentially narrowing the travel lane with the presence of a bike lane would also then probably slow, naturally slow drivers down, since there'd be a narrower space to traverse. Correct?
Correct. I mean, that's, that's an option that's out there. And with that, it could be two four-foot wide bike lanes, one on each side of East State Street.
I think that the general policy of Andy Stone over the past few years has been a complete the street.
Yes.
Approach to things, which means looking at the transportation part as, you know, there's multiple uses and they have to be able to coordinate and cooperate, and that certain types of building will help to do that, but it is complete the streets.
Any other miscellaneous from administration? Counsel, anything for transportation? Okay, we're completed.
Thank you, councilmember Pappy. If I am seeing the agenda correctly, we are now moving on to our last agenda item this evening, which is the City and Safety Services Committee chaired by Mr. Butler. I believe we just have one item this evening, which is the disposal of some of the windows from Arts West. I believe the administration has been having, they've had a dialogue with the Historical Society and also received an estimate from the contractor, or, I'm sorry, not contractor, but David Reiser, who appraised the value of the glass and its historical merit. So some of the glass will be removed from Arts West, but it will then be stored, if I'm understanding correctly, at the Historical Society. Sound correct?
That sounds correct.
Okay.
And this would be, since this is over $1,000, the estimate for the glass itself is $1,436.30 for these. The Historical Society has the same type of green glass in the building, and therefore they would like to, to use it for restoration of their new facility. I've also, though, instructed Andrew Chickie that we will also retain some for ourselves because we still have green glass in Arts West, so we're not giving away all of it. But this is, this is, you know, another way to show support, you know, for entities within the city, the Historical Society, that they have a need, but we will have some left over for ourselves too, if we have to repair any windows in Arts West.
Thank you, mayor. The clerk re-reminded me here that it appears that we'd be donating 158 panes and that we would be retaining 15 for the replacement purposes of Arts West.
15 panes we'll hang onto.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Regarding miscellaneous, I don't see any. Does the mayor's office have some?
The, the grant that we received, the $15,000 grant from Dr. Pepper Snapple Group for the Kaboom Grant, again, this is for playground equipment at Highland Park. The city, with next year's funding, or, well, this year, right, $25,000 will also go into the playground equipment for Highland Park. I know that Arts Parks and Rec Director Rich Campatelli has engaged with those, with that neighborhood and has gotten community members who live near Highland Park to where they're essentially kind of an ad hoc committee looking at the equipment, where it's going to be placed, things of that nature. But this is, this is one more example of, you know, when I took office, my telling my staff, I believe I mentioned this to council too, that there is no grant is too small. And so, and so this is $15,000. This is actually large. It's not a small amount of money to go towards playground equipment, going into and improving Highland Park.
Thank you, mayor. So besides the new equipment, will there also be the presence of the softer surface below it?
There will. That will likely take place in 2017, where we'll, we'll put the rubberized surface underneath the playground equipment. It'll be designed to have that put in place, but the cost of that, we'll wait until 2017 to put the rubberized material.
Thank you.
I understand they're looking at ADA accessibility of the equipment as well.
We are.
And thank you for directing, Rich Campatelli, the director of Arts Parks, thank you for directing him to engage with citizens up there. I know that's important. So thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any other miscellaneous?
I have an item. Oh, I have an item. On July 12th, we had the pool meeting. I was just wondering if we have an update as to when the consultants will be presenting to council their plans. It's a question.
We meet with MSA Sport this week, and then we'll be able to have a better timeline from there, during the final site selection. And we anticipate them coming for it either by the end of the month or early September.
Okay. There obviously has been things written in the paper, and I know different people have been approached regarding the planning process. I think, I don't know, there's a couple of us on council were at that meeting on the 12th, and I was pleased with MSA's responsiveness and, you know, their actions. I am concerned because I've had people asking me about the connection and affiliation with the university. And we had Shawna Bowlin here tonight for the master plan. We could have asked her, but there seems to be a conversation out there in the community, again, about partnering with the university regarding an indoor pool. And so that's come to me several times now in the last week or so. And I just, I don't know if that's come up with the consultants, or I'm not sure where that's coming from, but it seems to be out there, that that is a conversation people are having. And I, I've not been a part of that. So I, I just wondered, I just thought I'd bring it up.
I don't know that that's coming, it's certainly not coming through MSA Sport, if that's what you're asking, through our consultant. I will say this, that it's, I've heard similar information floating out there. I know that with Ohio University's master plan, part of their plan is to move and relocate Bird Arena, which is their ice skating rink, as well as their aquatic center. If, you know, there's, whenever that might be, how far down the road that might be, you know, again, those are all unknowns. I don't know that that's a high priority item for Ohio University, but I can't speak for Ohio University. So depending on where that goes, I will say this though, having been, as with many of you, in the process of looking at the levy and the language of the levy, you know, not that I recall, is there anything in the levy language that speaks to partnering with another entity and using taxpayer dollars in conjunction with another entity to create something. That language is not in there. So I, I would just throw words of caution out there about what, to what extent these levy dollars, taxpayer dollars can be used for in something. Now, could there be other ways of partnering with Ohio University if that's what they choose to do on an aquatic center that is truly, you know, collaboratively programmed? I mean, we can have those conversations. I would entertain those types of conversations with Ohio University, but again, I'm speaking to levy dollars that are out there for replacing a swimming pool.
And councilmember Pappy, and to add to the mayor's conversation here too, if I recall from what I read in the master plan, it does acknowledge that they would like to build a community pool under the same roof that they would have, and a competitive pool. And that, I think it even acknowledged two different bodies of water, different temperatures perhaps, but I know that Miami University has also undertaken that same direction when they, when they built their new community, their new university pool, I believe maybe 10, 15 years ago. So I would encourage you, if the conversations do take place, I definitely think we're wise to have those broader understandings of collaboration with, or partnering rather, in if they choose to move forward with building a new pool and it being open to our involvement and engagement, especially if they're going to build a community pool space besides the competitive space. I did mention that to one of the consultants when they were here from MSA. I did mention, I think I, I can't remember if I had a copy of the master plan with me, but I might have even pointed out to them that the university's master plan alluded to that, bigger indoor pool space. So perhaps that might have been where that got into the community or into the fray. Not sure.
Just know the lines of communication are wide open and options, you know, believe me, all options are good to entertain. Please see where it goes.
Councilmember Costas?
Thank you. You know, and as we move forward, I really hope that we can respect everybody's opinion, and maybe we won't necessarily hear everything that we want to hear. You know, I attended that meeting on the, on the 12th, and I brought my daughter, because my daughter's a pool user, and I thought her input might be, might be welcomed. And, and I had a, a community member ask my daughter if she was going to pay for the pool.
Yeah, that's rude.
And, you know, I don't think that that, it's not necessary. So I really hope that we can keep, continue to move forward.
Yeah.
In this process, in a respectful manner. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, member Costas. Any other comments or thoughts? Thank you, everyone. That concludes our meeting this evening. Thank you, all those who in TV land that stuck around with us. We're closing around 8:50 PM. Meetings adjourned. Thank you.